Okay, we're going to get started tonight. We're going to start with the invocation given by Pastor Pete Corin of the New Life Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Is Pastor here? Would one of you guys mind doing the invocation?
I can do it.
Okay. Vince, give the invocation and then we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance. If you could please stand.
Let's pray. Lord God, we thank you for this day you've given us today. We thank you for the blessings you give us each day. We thank you for our town of Kingsburg here and all our citizens. We pray that you keep them all safe each day, Lord, and we pray for our first responders, police, fire, EMTs. Lord, we pray you come with us, be with us tonight and help our council make wise decisions. And once again, we just pray for our citizens each day, Lord, to keep them all safe and healthy and out of trouble. For this, we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. It's the Kingsburg City Council regular agenda for May 21st, 2025. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call, please?
Pastor Chris Silva?
President?
Pastor Mike Colomar?
Here.
Pastor David Spinn?
Here.
Mayor Chris Silva?
Here.
Okay. We'll start with the approval of the agenda. Entertain motions for that.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Under presentations and informational reports, we have none, so we will move on to public comment. This provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council on items of interest to the public within the council's jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda this evening. It is the policy of the council not to answer these questions impromptu. Speakers should limit their comments to not more than three minutes. For items on the agenda, for items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will provide an opportunity to address council as each item is brought up for discussion. Do we have any members from the public that would like to come speak on the public comment? Come on up. We ask everybody, state your name and whether or not you're a resident as you come up, even though we know you. Thank you.
I'm Sharon Pearson. I'm chairman of the Swedish Festival Committee and just wanted to give you a report. The weather was great. The amount of people was great, about the same as last year. Thursday night, I thought it felt a little light, but all the tables were full. Friday night, we had a smorgasbord. That was the same amount of people as last year. ABBA was downtown and it seemed like a good crowd. I wish we had some way to, you know, count the numbers, but anyway, visually, it looked good. Then Saturday, we had the breakfast, the Dollar Horse Trot, and then the parade. It was a full day. Hope you all enjoyed it. The weather was good. So, can I pass out something?
Yes, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry. Anyway, it turned out to be a really good festival. So, we were, I think, on a whole, we were really happy with it. With the weather being cool, it was good. So, we talked to several restaurants and they said they weren't real busy, but they noticed that the people, the clientele that day was different. So, it wasn't the normal people that come in. It was other out-of-town people checking us out. So, anyway.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, guys, for your support.
I know you and the rest of that committee put together, put in so much time and effort. I see you guys down there at five in the morning, days beforehand, marking stuff off. And I just, the amount of effort that's put in by everybody is amazing, and we've had nothing but good feedback on it. So, we appreciate you guys.
It's a labor of love, so.
It's a labor, and we appreciate it.
Yeah. And I hope my daughter keeps thinking it's a labor of love.
Thank you for the report. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to come up and speak? Okay, if not, we'll go ahead and close public comment and move on to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and include a recommendation from staff and shall be acted on in one motion of the council. If a council member requests additional information or would like to pull an item for discussion, that item shall be pulled from the consent calendar and acted upon separately. A motion to approve the consent calendar is deemed to include a motion to waive a full reading of any ordinance or resolution on the consent calendar. We have a big consent calendar tonight. It is items one through 13. Do we have any members of council that would like to pull any consent items?
No.
Any members from the public or staff that would like to pull any consent? Okay, seeing none, we'll entertain motions for the consent calendar.
Make the motion.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent passes. Thank you. Now, we will move on to our regular calendar, which is going to start with a public hearing for Prop 218 election, the water rate study, staff report by Public Works Director Daniel Galvez. And we will start by opening the public hearing and get a presentation by Public Works Director Daniel Galvez.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. City staff is back here today to host the public hearing for our Prop 218 water rate study. Just a little background, for those that haven't heard the presentation or have attended any of the previous meetings, so March 19th, the city and the consultant, Allison LeHovitch with LNT, presented the final water rate study, which covers a five-year period. The rate study includes a detailed cost analysis, a determination of current and future revenue needed to provide water services, an assessment of existing customers' fee structure, options for changes to the rate structures such as meter fees, conservation, bulk water issues, et cetera, and requirements for communication to comply with Prop 218. At the March 19th meeting, the council did approve Resolution 2025-22, which established a procedure for submission and tabulation of the protests in connection to tonight's rate study. It also set the public hearing date for today and started a 45-day notice period for the Prop 218 hearing. So, on the 19th, there was 4,194 accounts. The notices went out separately from the utility bill. It did include a pre-filled-out protest ballot where it allowed residents and water users to just complete their personal information to be able to submit that. We also had it posted in the Business Journal and all. And so, today, we do have Allison here again to give that presentation. 2025-31 implementing the proposed rates as presented effective July 1st, 2025.
I presented back in March. It's no new material. It's just a kind of a refresher. I won't go over every bullet point. I'll keep it moving along and just to give a little background to folks maybe who weren't here. They were last adjusted in 2019, and that prior rate study. And then your treatment system is more complex than what was envisioned in the prior rate structure. So, you use granulated, sorry, granular activated carbon. electricity, materials, supplies, and chemicals. That's a kind of a universal state of the industry at this moment in time. So, currently, your monthly rate structure is a base fee of $32.25, which includes the first 11,000 gallons of water. We are. We are recommending, instead of one base fee for all types of customers, we're transitioning to a meter fee. So, your fee would be different based on meter size. So, water rates and charges are intended to fully support your water fund. We want to make sure that the water utility is not like borrowing funds from the general fund or other city funds. It really needs to be self-supported by rates and charges. So, why do we need a rate increase? So, we did a five-year financial plan, looking at revenues and expenses. So, this chart shows we have about 2.5 million in existing revenues annually compared to about 2.1. Water Management Act and paying off debt. So, if you had no rate increase, you would operate at a deficit. So, we're planning a course correction, increasing revenues to cover these expenses as well as capital improvement costs. So, these are. Replace aging assets, so pipes, pumps, wells, all those things have a useful life. They wear down. We have to replace them. We have to plan to have the money available to do that. So, this rate plan funds 3.9 million of expenses related to infrastructure. So, we are planning a year-over-year rate adjustment. That's an overall picture for the entire utility. Individual rate impacts will depend on how much water you use and like what type of customer you are. But this level of increase is needed, like I said, to reverse the deficit, fund increasing operating costs, regulatory compliance. We want to make sure that the city's rate structure is compliant with court, recent court cases, legal requirements, and to be fair to all customers. So, currently, 11,000 gallons of water consumption is included in the base fee. So, you sort of pay for it whether you're using 11,000 gallons or not. The courts have said that that is not proportional. So, a low-water-use customer is paying the same as somebody using 11,000 gallons, right? The base fee applies for all use up to 11,000 gallons. So, we are proposing a single volume rate applied to all customer types. So, you pay for what you use and all customers pay the same rate. Okay? So, this chart has the proposed rates. So, currently, that base fee is the 32.25. It will be shifted based on meter size. Most single-family residential customers are that one-inch meter fee. So, it's about staying the same, going to 32.57 and then increasing each year thereafter. But the real adjustment is that there's no longer that 11,000 gallons included in that base fee. And so, instead of using the current rate structure where there's a tiered, increasing-tiered fee, so 11,000 gallons to 22,000 gallons is eight cents, and then 22 to 34 is 95 cents, and then above that is a dollar 14. We're proposing to charge all customers the same volume rate at all levels of use. And so, that volume rate is also increasing over time. We did provide a schedule of fees for un-metered customers. We understand that the city is intending to roll out its meter program to all customers eventually, but if that takes a little time, you do have a rate structure for them that's proportional to the other proposed rates and charges. So, we looked at a range of bill impacts. So, low-water users versus high-water users versus average use, you know, summer versus winter. Summer usage, it would be a typical bill impact of about a $20 increase. Winter usage would be about a $10 per month increase, and then average use would be $15 to $16 for most customers. So, then, this chart shows the typical bill survey. So, I compared City of Kingsburg's current and proposed bill for an average customer and looked at other local utilities. So, your current bills are very, very low, and that reflects that you haven't raised rates since 2019, whereas a lot of these other local agencies have. And even with the bill increase, with the proposed rates, Kingsburg's typical bill would fall in the middle of the surveyed agencies. So, you're in line with typical utility costs for the valley. Okay, we'll kind of go through that. So, we've conducted a Proposition 218 outreach process. We've waited the 45, more than the 45-day waiting period, and so tonight would be the public hearing. Absent a majority protest, city council could consider the rate plan and adopt rates up to the maximum rate shown in the notice. So, I'm happy to answer any questions or address any issues.
Do we have any council discussion on this? Questions, Vince?
You have a question. On the ongoing expenses?
Sure.
I don't see an expense here of what we're paying for water from consolidated.
So, those are listed under the Sigma recharge process under the capital improvement costs?
So...
So, we do have...
How are we paying that? Is that per acre foot from consolidated?
From consolidated, yes.
So, what are we paying per acre foot?
I don't have that info.
Here's what's here. I think it's 3.95 an acre foot right now, but I can confirm that. But we get in, we have an annual, the amount that we have for O&amp;M includes our GSA fees in total. So, we're a member of SKGSA, so there's an amount that we send for, it's based upon pumping. So, there's a total, so whatever we pump per year, the GSA has to, you know, well, the GSA has an allotment that they buy from CID in total. That's divided over the communities that are part of the GSA and then split by a percentage. So, I think for 2024, we were about 21% of the total pumping that the entire GSA did. So, that's our contribution based upon our agreement with CID. But the O&amp;M costs for the, for our Sigma project, or Sigma both ongoing costs and for projects are part of the rate study, but they're part of our total costs that are due to the GSA. So, we pay more into the GSA than just what we pay to CID. So, there's some administrative costs and other items based upon capital projects that occur within the GSA, but at least what our share is. So, we know what those have been historically, and then we've estimated them going out over this five-year rate study.
So, do we know how much more we're paying consolidated compared to what we paid for water like 2016, 17, 18? What were we paying per acre foot?
Well, we didn't have an acre foot, an acre foot charge for consolidated prior to Sigma. So, there was a cooperative agreement that we had with CID that involved some administrative charges and then fees for building certain types of infrastructure with CID. So, for example, we connected the historical park ponding basin prior to Sigma going into effect, and so that was done through fees that we paid through CID. Once Sigma went into place, then we were, you know, the city was required to put all the water that we take out of the ground, so we don't have any surface water. All we have are seven wells. So, our, the requirement of Sigma is, is that we have to make the, be sustainable, or all cities have to be sustainable. So, whatever you're taking out, you have to show that you put back in. The only way that we can do that is through surface water. And so, that's where the purchasing agreement comes from with CID or through the GSA that we're a part of. So, we didn't purchase water prior to that because there wasn't a requirement to purchase water.
So, we were on, you said it was a corporate rate with backing those?
So, from 2010 on, CID went to the individual cities and required cooperative agreements. So, at that time, so whenever there's annexations in cities, CID, you know, you have to detach from them because otherwise then you would be voting in CID's district. So, CID, you know, this predates me a little bit, and someone might could probably talk a little bit about it too, but CID systematically went to the individual cities and told them that if they didn't enter into the cooperative agreements, which would have, which required the cities to pay CID, they would protest the annexations. So, they essentially said that we will not allow you to continue to annex property unless you enter into a cooperative agreements with us. And so, Kingsburg, I believe, was the first community to do that. Subsequently, some of the other communities went, had lawsuits with CID and then ultimately settled and had their own individual cooperative agreements. But again, that's all predates Sigma.
Right. So, when we entered with the South Kings, instead of staying in Central, because we could have possibly, potentially had a lot cheaper rate for water per acre foot, we just, you know, but we entered South Kings instead of, because isn't Central kind of partners with CID?
Well, Central is CID.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. So, we probably would have had a lot better rate with Central.
Yeah. I couldn't speculate on that because I don't know what the rate would be right now.
I think it would be substantially less if we would have stayed with Central, but we're not there, so, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
I have one quick question. Just, this is going to be specifically regarding the 218. How many potential voters are we looking at for this? Maybe that's for the clerk?
4,194.
1,194, thank you. Do we have any other council discussion? Okay, then we will open it up for public comment. Any members of the public like to come up and speak to this item? Questions or comments? Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Don Pauley. I was a city manager here for 13 years. My wife and I are now fully retired. We use less than 10,000 gallons of water a month because all of our kids and grandkids are somewhere else, Minnesota, LA, and Visalia. And so, the only time they use our water is when they come for the holidays. Because of that, we don't need to be spending and paying any more than the current rate that we're currently paying, which is $32.25 a month. If you look at this rate system, it goes from 32.25 to 32.57 on July 1st of this year. And then it increases to 47.57 the next year. That's a 46% increase. For what reason? For what reason do you have to spend that much more money? And it gets that bad every month thereafter? And for us senior citizens, we're struggling with our revenue as is. You don't need to take money from us. That goes to other people's benefit, not to ours. I would strongly urge you to have a different rate system that provides just a rate for senior citizens, period. Because we aren't going to be here forever. I retired here when I was 65. I'm 77 now, and I'll probably not make it for another four years. My meter is a 25-year meter. We moved into that house 25 years ago. We had it built for us. It's not changed a dime. My due respect, leave us alone. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Deborah Maddock. I've moved to Kingsburg about two years ago, and I appreciate the comments that were just made. They're very similar to what I have in mind, mainly that the increase in the rate seems too steep over the short term. I'm a single household user. I don't go anywhere near the 11,000-gallon grant at the big, at this point. And so, I didn't understand the rate increase plan over time. It didn't make any sense. I wish there had been an example of like, here's what you're paying now and here's what you're going to pay. I wish I had seen some live example like that. I had a hard time understanding it. My feeling is simply that the increase in the rate increases too steep over the time, and that's what I have to say for you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other members of the public that would like to speak to this? Come on up.
Evening, Mayor, members of council, staff. I'm proud of Kingsburg. I'm proud of what we have and what we've accomplished here. But I'm a little confused with the process, partly because I haven't been plugged in. I'm, in the past, I was used to knowing it all, so I'm sorry that I don't have the information. But in just general schema is, I applaud the senior rate comment that was promoted. The slower increase seems a bit better, in which if I look at just the numbers that were given on the flyer that was mailed to everyone, it looks like our prices will double in three years. And that seems excessive for what I was able to read out of the flyer of what I was getting. Granted, there must be more behind that somewhere somehow, but I didn't see it. So, I saw that there was going to be a new well 17 or something. It's hard to read from where I was sitting, coming up. Is that for newer buildings or is that old, an old well being replaced or what was it? If it's new buildings, maybe we should have more of an assessment fee on new construction than possibly what we have now. Maybe that's more of a push in that direction as opposed to pushing back on the existing customers that have been paying their fees diligently over the months. If we are going to get a rate increase, I want to be a person that gets something for what I'm paying for. Can we have a better system so that I can see my usage daily as opposed to just getting a bill each month? Is there a way to be able to see what's going on and be able to pay it easily? That would be helpful. It seems a little cumbersome and a little cludgy of being able to, at least the payment process that I've been able to embrace. But I'd love to be able to see a rate each day so that I know what activity was... But I'd love to be able to see a rate each day so that I know what activity was driving what fee. The gas company does it, the power company does it, why can't our water company do it? Or our water people? That just seems something that, if I'm going to be paying a fee, I want to be able to, be able to get something for me out of it, if at all possible. And one of the last things that I want to look at is, what about a bond instead of just flat-out increases? It seems to be more of a systemic problem either from nineteen, twenty nineteen, and I understand with COVID and all of the mess, no one wanted to raise fees during that time. That's understandable. But maybe we've gotten to the point in which we need to do a bond for the whole community, for our water system, more so than that, if my fees are going to be doubling in two years, it seems like an excessive amount of improvements that are looking to be had over this. And my last question is, why in the heck is Clovis a lot cheaper? Has anyone talked to them and asked them what's going on? Are they using surface water? Can we get water off the river during the summers? Like the community I'm associated with in the mountains, we do off to, uh, the Aquifer to, uh, Tooney County, and we get that off the summer, and we're able to process that water easily. Can we do that here? And what type of credit are we getting when we ship our water back to the river? Are we monitoring that and taking advantage of some of the price adjustments? Because we actually are providing water to the river from our storm drains. Do we have a meter on that? Do we know exactly what we're giving back? So those type of things, I'm, I'm battling in my head, and I'm just confused. So as a confused senior citizen, my personal vote is no for the two eighteen system.
Okay, um, just a couple, couple, just housekeeping items. One, I don't think that we get credit for pushing water back into the river. But I'm also getting the nod from the city clerk. She is asking you to formally announce who you are and whether or not you're a resident of Kingsburg.
Yes, I'm sorry, John Wright, living sixteen-hundred Union Street. No problem.
I don't have an answer for the Clovis, uh, Mr. City Manager, do you have a possible answer?
You, go ahead.
Yeah, so, so Clovis does have, uh, surface treatment in addition to pumping. Uh, they also utilize recycled water. Uh, we don't run our own wastewater treatment plant, so we don't use any of that water for irrigation, which gives you some credit in terms of the states and fees and things of that nature. So everything that we do is coming from the ground, so it's, it's all the, uh, ground pump water, so it's more expensive, so.
I'm assuming if we were to add a treatment plan of some sort, we're probably talking a hundred million dollars for that in this area? Like our rates, that answers that? Three hundred million, yeah, I'm assuming our rates would be a little higher.
Yeah, and then just other questions. I know, I know there's been a question about a senior citizen rate. So when we discuss the, the rates, uh, those type of discounts aren't permitted. Uh, when we did the solid waste one, the reason that we're able to accommodate a senior citizen rate is because we're able to provide a smaller container. So instead of a ninety-six gallon, you're getting the sixty-four gallon. Uh, and even that discount is very minimal, just because the fixed cost to provide the service is still pretty much the same. So takes the same amount of miles per gallon per truck and, you know, paying the guy the same amount of money to pick up a ninety-six gallon versus a sixty-four gallon. The tipping fees might be a little bit less, but that's where we are able to provide a little bit of a, of relief. But in terms of the water, I mean, one inch is pretty much our standard, smallest one that we can provide, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wright, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Uh, do, any other public comments? Like to come up? Come on up, don't be shy. If you could, just, just start by saying your name and whether or not you're a resident of Kingsburg.
Um, hi, my name's Paul Sherbentier, and I live in Kingsburg, and I've lived here since two, let's see, nineteen ninety-four, so. Just a couple of questions and maybe just a comment, just have, uh, studying the, I looked at the study quickly today, and it did mention a test well. A test well is different than a drilled well for number seventeen. So during that time period of five years, it doesn't look like we're getting a new well. It's just a test well. Is that part of the State Water Resources Control Board requirement? Or is that something that can be Kingsdale knocked out and just go drilling to the well unless there's contamination underneath the ground in the area that we're looking at to drill that new well? Just kind of a question I have for that time period, for that area. Does anybody have an answer?
Yeah, do you have a comment also, and then I'll?
Oh, yeah, sure. The comment is just, and I think somebody else kind of answered it, it was during COVID time, but a well-regulated, run public water system increases their fees a little bit at a time. This huge increase is, is a strain on the senior citizens and other people. So just comment is to rather see a little bit of an increase than a huge increase coming up. And we all need water to survive and to continue to grow. Whiskies for drinking, waters for fighting, and that's going to continue as we move forward. But that's all I have.
Yeah, and I, I don't think any of us are going to disagree with the fact this would be a lot easier if it would have started in twenty nineteen.
But I know wells to drill are very expensive, and we could probably save a half a million dollars if they go and just directly drill the well. If you have the data, the hydrogeology studies for the city of Kingsburg.
And I don't have an answer for that. Uh, Alex or Daniel, do you have?
Yeah, I mean, I think in general, just talking a little bit about the capital outlay project, so that, that, that's a, that's a budget, you know? And so every single year, so even though we're showing, I guess, what would be the potential highest end rates, the council does have the ability every year to look at those and determine whether or not they need to implement those based upon how the, uh, based upon how the fund is operating. So we sort of look at, I guess, what I would call a worst-case scenario with regards to capital projects. So it's, you know, you'll see new well seventeen or a test well there in the, in the, in the out year. Uh, so it's very possible, just based upon where we're at with growth and things like that, that that could come off the board, right? Like, we don't have to do it, and then, so then when we're looking at the budget in that year, we would take that off, and the rate would reflect that. We did something very similar, uh, with regards to our garbage rates, when, when they went up. You know, we, uh, the council adopted sort of a higher-end thing, and then each year we look at it, and each of those years we have implemented a lower rate than what was actually adopted when we did that Prop two eighteen process, so. The test well thing is usually just to make, because we do, as was mentioned earlier, we have a couple of walls in town that have detection of TCP one-two-three, uh, which is why we have GAC activated. So, um, uh, as opposed to drilling a whole new well and then getting there and realizing that it's not viable, that's usually the purpose for the test well, but, um, that would be something that would be certainly on the hands of our engineering staff at that time and the determination at that point.
Well, thank you very much.
Yes. Thank you, I appreciate your comments. Do you have any other public comments? Hold on. Welcome back.
Thank you, Dave, Dave Creek Law, resident here. Listen, uh, first of all, it's, I applaud you guys for taking on this responsibility. To, uh, to me, wells and pipelines, and we've done a lot of that, you know, as you know. And it, it, it all takes money to put in the first place, and it takes money to maintain it. So to me, it's like driving your car or anything else. You better stay up with it, maintain them. If you had two, three wells go down at the same time, that could be tough. We know energy prices are going to do nothing but go higher, and I know that all, uh, has been looked at too. As far as, you know, it's, it's a, I get the increase, it's kind of a hit for a lot of people. But like, kind of just do it once, save your time and money. I'm doing another study three years from now, or whatever, you have to do, that all is costly. So I applaud what you're doing here in the staff for keeping this city where it needs to be, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Do you have any other public comment? Come on up, uh, hold on, just, Mr. Pauly, come on up.
I just wanted to add one more item. You don't need to pot, use PG&E for your wells. It's called solar. I have solar on my house. You have more solar in this town than you can believe. You could put solar on every one of your wells. It's going to save you a lot of money. A lot of money. Consider that.
I think that's exactly why we put a bunch of solar on all of our wells this last year. If you go around over by Erling Park and some of the other ones, you're going to see huge solar panels that are powering our wells. That's exactly why we did that.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Do you have any other public comment? Okay, so then we will close public comment and come back for council discussion, final, final statements.
Yep, I have a question for Daniel, I think. Um, in regards to Mr. Pauly's twenty, twenty-five-year-old meter, haven't we upgraded meters?
So in, in that timeframe, they did get a different antenna. Um, and this is just another comment that I'm going to add into it. So, uh, as we're kind of preparing into this next phase of this water system, tracking water losses and tracking water usage is, is something that's very important for us. So we've worked with engineering right now, we're, eventually we'll bring back some, some new standards. Because what we're doing now is what we, we read the, the meters monthly. Uh, so in order for us to get a read, I have to take a tablet and an antenna and be somewhere near your meter to be able to pull a, a reading on there. Uh, but the goal is eventually to have an AMI system, which is like a radio read system that will provide daily readings to us. That will allow you to go into your computer to look at what PG&E sees with the smart meters to be able to view your daily consumption. It's usually like a twenty-four-hour period before you'll be able to see it on that portal. Uh, but it is something that we, that we've looked at. It's something that's important on our end to be able to detect water losses. So as part of that system, you'll be able to get like a twenty-four-hour consumption report. So for example, if your house has twenty-four-hour consumption, in the morning, we'll get a report that says like, hey, all of these addresses have had water running for twenty-four hours. We can go knock on your door and say, hey, you may have a potential leak or something's leaking. Um, and so those are things that are coming. Obviously, the, the price of those things and the, the things that we're going to eventually get there. Um, that there are some grants that are available to implement some of those systems, um, but they do cost additional funds to replace. So eventually, there is a replacement period and replacement time to replace the, usually the meters have, have a, a timeframe, depending on when the meter was installed, um, of how long it's working, obviously. If it's not, not working, if we're still getting a reading for it, it, I don't think it'd be efficient for us to pull that meter out, put a new one in there when it's still working. So once, once they're dead, we, we do get money. We have been buying meters and replacing the meters and also the registers. The manufacturer right now does provide a five-year warranty for them, so when there's an issue, we're able to return them back. If they're outside the warranty period, they also rebuild them and give us a prorate credit for them, uh, which is a practice that we're currently doing.
On that specifically, just real quick, um, is that something that we're, every new home that goes in is going to have?
We, we're working on getting a new standard put in so that it has a different, basically a datamatic is just the top head. This looks a little different than what, um, what's currently installed, and the lid will be a little bit different. Uh, it'll have a hole and an antenna sticking out on the top of it to be able to be read, like I said, remotely. But that's what we'll be proposing for the next couple subdivisions that are new, so.
So as of right now, to Mr. Wright's point, if, if he wanted a daily readout, we would have to send staff every day to take that readout with the current technology that's in the meters.
Correct.
But if the two eighteen passes and we have more dollars, we could potentially get, get that, everything upgraded quicker, and then it would suffice for?
Yeah, so our goal is to apply for a grant, there's an efficiency grant that you can provide, uh, you can apply for to the Department of Reclamation. They consider those like three-million-dollar grants or less small grants. Um, but those are the type of projects that they've supported and awarded in the past, is to install those types of systems to be, uh, have a more efficient system. Because like I said, we do, we do experience a lot of water loss. Like I said, right now, if you have a sprinkler leak and you're not home, then you don't know, we don't know unless we see, we're driving by and we see it, or your neighbor calls and say, hey, there's water flowing down the ground. I mean, like I said, right now, that's part of your allotment, but with this new process, you'll be paying for every thousand gallons of water, so.
Question along those lines. Who pays for the new meter? Is that, does the homeowner pay for that when they're replaced?
Currently, right now, the system is covering the replacement costs, so you're not getting billed. Once you've paid for your initial meter, you're not being billed for your second or the repair of the meter.
So is that budgeted in the, um, projects here that we're looking at?
We've had, so in this, in this next fiscal year, we don't have, so it's part of the other large maintenance piece. Like I said, we've purchased meters every year. During COVID, we ordered some and didn't get any for like a year and a half, and then they all showed up at once, which was nice. But it also took us a while to go back in there and make those repairs. But they have a pretty steady, uh, stream of, of meters now, so.
Yeah, just to, just so I'm clear, because Mr. Wright's comments really kind of resonated with me with the wanting to be able to monitor it daily thing. What would that project look like financially? What are we talking about? If we're to, because you're talking about buying the system and then replacing each individual meter, correct?
Individual meter, yeah, so like I said, yeah, overtime, so.
How much, how much is this system without the individual meters?
It's, it's a couple hundred thousand dollars. Uh, but like I said, for, our, our goal is to be able to find a grant to pay for that. So it also requires, uh, basically radio readers, you know, whether we put one on the water tower, put one at the dog park tower. Uh, I know there was a little discussion about why, whether we should take that down or not, and I advocate it for it to stay because it may be a, a location where we need to put a repeater or antenna to be able to receive those signals, so.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, because those are things that we want to hear about when we go Sacramento and DC and we're lobbying for dollars. These are good things to ask for, so I appreciate, I appreciate that. And Mr. Wright, I appreciate that idea.
Mr. Mayor, I just, on that same topic, I mean, we've, we've had the, the same conversation, because I think the expectation is when you, you know, you have a, a gas bill or an energy bill, that you are doing that, it becomes sort of the, you know, recognized. And so we, we've certainly had those conversations internally. I think it probably, it would involve, you know, so, I don't, you may remember about ten years ago, you know, half the community was not metered for water, and so there was a very large meter project that the city took, you know, we essentially bonded for, uh, and then installed those, and then they were paid for over time by homeowners. So, uh, if there's a way for us to retrofit them, uh, that's what we'd look at. Otherwise, you know, you, we want, you'd have to have a system that could potentially read the old ones and the new ones, so it's looking at all that. And, and, you know, the challenge is, is that both PG&E and SoCal Gas are for-profit entities. So they absolutely are going to put those things in and, and provide, provide that, and, and we certainly want to do that, but we're also are very cognizant of, you know, making sure that, you know, first and foremost, we're delivering, uh, you know, clean, uh, safe drinking water and trying to do that, so, you know, we don't have to have these discussions more than we are having right now and, um, trying to keep those costs down, so. You know, but certainly, uh, well, well-taken point.
With, with the addition of solar that we just made, how are we budgeting for the utility costs? Are we taking that into account?
We are, so, I mean, the biggest thing is, is that, so we were able to put solar at two locations, right? So we have seven wells. We cannot, uh, you know, the way that the solar program works is, is that we can't just put a bunch of solar panels anywhere that we want and then offset our costs, right? So if we don't have, so for example, our well twelve, uh, you've all, you all drive past, you know, probably pretty frequently, is on Eighteenth Avenue, right? It's, there's a small island there, there's a well there. Uh, we didn't have enough room there to put the treatment facility, so the treatment facilities for that, that granular, that GAC treatment facility is located across from Sephardian Field, right? So, um, that connects to that well. So there's not an ability to put enough solar to offset those costs. So what we're doing is, you know, because we have solar at those two locations, is that we will strategically run those two wells as much as we possibly can, be, especially, you know, when the sun is shining, um, so that we are diverting those energy costs as much as we can. So they're considered, but at the same time, we also have, we have to pay for that solar. So, uh, you know, we're, we might not be giving those funds to PG&E, uh, but we're going to be using, uh, the dollars that would have gone to PG&E to pay, you know, for what we had to borrow to put that solar in, and then obviously, obviously over time, will pay for itself, just, just as if you put solar in at your house. But tho- those are considered, and those debt costs for the solar project were considered in the rate study as well.
Other questions?
No, I have a, just a comment, I was looking at our capital improvement costs for the recharge projects. It looks like it's like a million, two fifty. And once again, you know, I, I feel that that's a lot, uh, you know, with the South Kings, because I know, you know, I mean, it'd be a dead horse, but with Central Kings and CID, Water District, they have a lot of land already set, put away for, for recharge, so. Once again, I think our cost for, for water recharge would be substantially less, would be, you know, a lot less if we would have not gone with the South Kings.
If I can give a little context to that, because I'm a grower in CID, so CID is facing a two-eighteen also. So, they're going out to their growers currently because they do not have enough property secured and enough recharge ponds built, and so they're looking at a long-term project, and they need money to accelerate that timeline. So, even, even the fees that if we would have stayed in South, or the Central Kings, they would be going up, because I, I know that, you know, I attend those meetings, the growers are gonna have to pay more for water by the looks of it, and then even the city that's in that GSA is gonna more than likely have to pay more money for water also.
Right.
Just for, just for a little context.
Yeah, I know, I just don't think nearly as much as we're paying.
It's probably less, yeah.
Yeah, it's a lot less, and I know that, I've talked to guys from there, and I know the farmers are, you know, they do need more land for, because they're gonna start charging the farmers now also, yeah. It's California, it's the state, yeah.
Well, a lot of that is brought about by Sigma and groundwater sustainability that the state imposes not only on growers, but on residents and cities as well. So, unfortunately, we're having to deal with the ball that's rolled down the hill to us, so.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, the only comment I'd like to make on this is that, I mean, I support the project, we need to move forward, but I do think we need to consider the, because the proposed rate is the maximum, I'd like to consider lowering that for the first year, that would be my one comment before we move forward.
I'm just gonna say this for my opinion, I, I've served on the SKGSA, Vince, Dave, we've all served on it before, and I think that we can debate whether or not that was a mistake or not, this is where we are. I think that when we make mistakes up here, which we do, we need to own those, and that's potentially one of them. The 2019, there being no rate increase between 2019 and 2025, I think we need to own that too, if I'm being honest. Think that if we would have done this incrementally, if we could have forecasted the future, we wouldn't be here in the same, I think we'd be in the exact same rate situation, if I'm being honest, but I think you'd have been paying more up until this point. But I think that that would have made it a little bit easier for budgeting and stuff, so I'll be the first one to admit, if we would have started this in 2019, we'd be a lot better, and every one of us can probably take a little bite of that apple. But this is where we are today, I don't want to sit here and have this same conversation with myself in 2031 to say we should have done it in 2025. That's, that's kind of where I'm at right now, it's, it's gonna be terrible, it is a huge rate increase, there's no debate, but I don't see how we're gonna keep having water in all of our homes if we don't do it, so. Do we have any other council discussion? Okay, then we will, we will, first of all, we'll close public comment, we will close the council discussion, and if there's nothing else, we will close the public hearing. With that, we will have our city clerk announce the results. Do you need, do you need a few minutes?
No.
And we, this is, we need a fifty percent opposition correct, which would be a total of two thousand ninety-seven no votes would need to take place.
All right, Mayor Purcell and members of council, we received two-hundred-and-eighteen protest ballots. There are four-thousand-one-hundred-and-ninety-four accounts, therefore, for the fifty-plus one, we would need two-thousand-and-ninety-eight votes. Then we did not have enough for a major, majority protest.
Okay, so we do not have enough objection for it to just die. Looks like we are right at about five percent total, and we need fifty percent total for that. So, with that being the case, this would be an action item to, I'll bring this up just to give my words exact. The recommended action by council is that we open the public hearing at the conclusion, absent of a majority protest, which we are absent of a majority protest. We would be approving resolution 2025 dash zero thirty-one, implementing the proposed rates as presented, effective on or after July first, 2025, authorizing annual increases on July first through 2029 pursuant to the requirements of Prop two-eighteen. We will entertain motions for that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that resolution passes. That will complete our public hearing and two-eighteen election. Next, we'll move on to item fifteen, the one percent public safety sales tax. Measure E overview, presentation by Police Chief Neil Dadian and Fire Chief Rodney Roberts.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, just, while Chief is coming up, just for your information, the Measure E Oversight Committee did meet on this item on Monday of this week. The, the presentations that you'll receive this evening are either similar or duplicates, I would assume, from both the chiefs. We also took the time to give them a brief update about the potential Measure E renewal, or the, the proposed Measure E renewal, planning for June of 2026, and certainly, and solicited their feedback, and they didn't have any on Monday, but we also told them that we would keep them informed as the process played out over the next several months as well. So, happy to answer any questions on that, and then I will turn it over to Chief Dadian.
Welcome, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening to you and members of the council. So, I'll give you a quick overview of where we're at in this year's spending plan and then what we project for next year. It's pretty much the same thing. So, here we are, just touching on some capital outlay. We spent approximately eighty thousand this year on body-worn cameras and dash-mounted cameras. That's year two of five years on a subscription, and we're looking at three more years going into this year for that. About seventy-five thousand, it's a little bit lower this year and the following years. Vehicles, that has been some angst, just because it got slow after COVID with chips, vehicles, et cetera. So, we finally have them all, and they are here, we have them marked, we are still waiting on three to be completed, one I think is at Cook's with upfitting, and two more are waiting to be outfitted. So, that takes a while, because we can't actually get in line there until we put, until we have the vehicles ready to go, we have them with us. So, that's taken some time, and we've carried over some Measure E money from, back from twenty-two, twenty-three, so. But we're good to go with that and should have those up and running in the next few months if all goes well. Safety equipment, twenty thousand six hundred budgeted for that, and that's just equipment, replacement. It's ammunition for the officers and, and training, ballistic vests, helmets, restraints, personal protective gear of various sorts, and TASER subscription, so that was a significant cost for us this year, as we switched from TASERS that are no longer being supported to TASER ten. We have for our training plan, a couple things still ongoing, any specialty training that may, that the officers may have scheduled and haven't completed yet, individual assignment and investigative training, same thing. We did complete the TASER ten training, Peacekeeper baton training, which is a different type of baton than we've been carrying previously. Technical and investigative conferences, supervisory and leadership conferences, women, leadership development, and new laws and regulations, which are always ongoing. Some other specialty training, just to give you an example of what type of specialty training there is, tactical breacher, tactical building searches, arrest and control instructor, Gracie Jiu-Jitsu instructor. We've been fortunate, one of our reserve officers, I think you all know, the former chief for DMV, Tom Wilson, he runs at Tulare Kings Academy. So, we send it, we usually send two or three people to that, and he always gives us a free seat, so that's really nice of him to do that. Digital evidence recovery, pistol optics, optics instructor, armor course, surveillance fundamentals, interviewing school age children, sending the school resource officers to a yearly update. So, all of that stuff continues to be ongoing, and Measure E is funding all of that. Other specialty training, leadership training such as, you know, things for supervisors, non-post reimbursable training, the Central California Women's Conference and Women's Leadership in Law Enforcement, which includes, all of this includes professional staff as well as sworn staff. And personnel, for this, this current year, we, it kind of breaks down, as you see it up there, where we have nine full-time Measure E-funded positions, that's five police officers, one police sergeant, two police lieutenants, and twenty-five percent of my salary is, is accomplished with that also. I didn't have it on here, but, and you'll see it in the Fire Chief's report, it's point one-seven percent of an accountant and point fifty, fifty percent of a account clerk, which the, we share with the fire department. With that, and other third-party funds, our school resource contracts, et cetera, we have twenty-six sworn staff and thirty full-time employees for this fiscal year. Next fiscal year going into that, we're gonna have to alter that a little bit. So, we'll continue the funding for all of what I just mentioned, except five police officers will now drop down to four police officers. The Measure E funds have stabilized, we, they have not increased, you know, they were, they were going north for a few years, and that was great, and we were adding bodies, but personnel costs have increased, colas, et cetera. So, unfortunately, we can't afford all nine of those bodies, now it's just going to be eight. So, we're gonna back out one police officer position. And let me see, that's all it breaks down, so we'll have twenty-nine full-time employees, down from thirty. Not sure where that is gonna come out of the deployment, but I have the lieutenants working on that, and we'll figure that out as we go. Next, on capital outlay, seventy-five thousand dollars for year three of our subscription for the body-worn cameras and dash-mounted cameras. Training plan, pretty much the same as before, I did, I previously funded, or I budgeted fifty thousand for that, I backed that down to forty thousand, which we'll be fine with that amount, but it's pretty much all of the same things that I just mentioned that we have, kind of a standard menu year to year. Our spending plan on other things, materials and services, I just kind of broke this down a little bit more finite, just to give you an idea of what's in each line item, office supplies, right, we all need pens, pencil, paper clips, a variety of things. Safety equipment, nineteen grand, screening of personnel, I actually reduced that down a little bit more since this presentation, that's, that nine, ninety-seven hundred is gonna drop down a little, probably to about, I think it was closer to, a little under six thousand. Department tools, fifty-three hundred communications, eighty-five hundred vehicle maintenance, almost ten grand fuels. We dropped that down, we've reduced that from about thirty-five to thirty thousand, and equipment maintenance we cut in half. And then the next two slides are Measure E-funded materials and services. And if you recall, our school resource officers, we have a contract with the elementary school district and a contract with the high school district. They fund full-on costs for the police officer, but in partnership with them, we take Measure E funds, and we provide a patrol car, we provide materials and services, services and supplies, you know, their equipment, their training, their office supplies, et cetera, like that, their communication costs, so all of that is funded from Measure E. And for both of those budgets, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Chief?
Chief, how would you rate, how would you rate the department before Measure E and after Measure E? Can you put that into context for us?
Let me think of a metric.
Use a scale of one to ten, if you'd like, I don't know if that works.
Okay, that's, that's as good as any. We, we probably went from five to a nine.
Okay.
Right, normally, I'm not saying ten, it's because there's always room for improvement, and I'll find it.
I appreciate that.
So, we, we significantly improved our delivery of service.
So, in order to maintain the nine, Measure E is gonna be vital going forward, right?
Yes.
I mean, if we, if we don't, if we don't fund, if Measure E was to not pass, then we would more than likely go back to a five. Is that fair?
Yes, that is, because, you know, I'll give you an example. So, some of the things that we're able to do is we're able to have dedicated detectives. Prior to that, we had people who, if, if, so you had a patrol officer, and they would kind of take the case start to finish, but that is really, really difficult to do. Now, we have them take it to a point, and if they want to take it forward, career development, skill development, we, we have a detective work with them and walk them through that, so the option is available. But normally, patrol officers take it to a certain point and then hand that off to a detective who can sit down, have the time, and skills to investigate that crime properly, right? That makes a huge difference in how that case, if that case gets filed and how it gets filed, and what charges we're able to submit for that. So, having that dedicated time, having those detectives with that dedicated time is huge. The other thing it has done for us is it's rounded out our staffing. Now, I could put a sergeant and two officers out pretty much most of the time. Now, there's, you know, FMLA or other forms of leave, notwithstanding, where we have to eat some shortages here and there. For the most part, I can get three people out there in, in, in the field twenty-four-seven, three sixty-five. Prior to that, two, at best. So, it would be significantly debilitating to operate without that funding.
Okay, well, I would like to say I appreciate your efforts in getting us to a nine. I, I think that that's great, the training, the new equipment, all those things, and, you know, I see your, your officers around town, they're very respectful, staff is very respectful, they're always out and about, and I appreciate what you've done with the department, and I would love to see that continue.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate your comments.
No questions, comments?
What, what's your current vacancy as a police officer?
None at this moment.
None with the elimination of the one?
I, I will, I just had a resignation. Somebody's leaving and going to Clovis PD, so we'll, we'll be able to take that by natural attrition.
Okay, and that was my question, no one's gonna be laid off?
No one's walking out the door.
We're just not, we're, we're just not filling the position here.
Correct.
And then, you know, specific to Measure E stuff, it's, obviously, you're well aware of how important it is. The guy, your, your guys are too, right? Because at, at a certain point, we're gonna need probably both of your labor groups to really go out there and make this pass, because we're gonna have to tap out of it at some point, we can be as supportive as we want, which we are, but at a certain point, we have to get out of the process. I just want to make sure that you're, you're passing along to your guys, hey, start, start ramping up, start preparing for that, because we're gonna need boots on the ground knocking on doors just to make sure this passes. I mean, truly, the safety of our city is gonna rely on that.
Yes, sir, you, you're absolutely correct, and I make that point to them on a regular basis.
Awesome.
Whenever I have them all in front of me, which I did last Friday, you know, right before the awards ceremony, I have a, I have a good time between pictures and our, our ceremony to talk with everybody. And I reinforced it once again, because you're right, at some point, we have to go hands-off, and the labor organizations have to pick, pick up the ball and run with it. And I told them, there's gonna be eight people walking out the door. I mean, really, one has walked out the door already, in theory, right, paper cut, but eight people will walk out the door if that doesn't pass.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, sir.
Next, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me to highlight what Misery has been doing for the fire department. So currently, in 2425 expenditures, they had a reorganization in 2425 of calculating which, which positions were gonna be used for Misery. And so, there is currently three fire captains, one fire apparatus engineer, one part-time administrative assistant, and then 50% of a account clerk, and then 17% of an accountant, split between US PD and Public Works. Also this year, in 2425, the current spending that we have right now for tools and supplies is $45,000. Those are going for things such as extrication tools, other tools that are on the fire engine, servicing those tools that need to be serviced every single year, and repairing communication. Part of that is through Kingsburg Media, some of its purchasing radios and updating our radios every year that we have. We need to update our radios. There's new compliance that's needed to be, that, so we could communicate with our partners that are out there. That's P25 compliant radios, things that, you know, that the state's wanting us to be able to provide, to be able to communicate when we're out there. Then the normal fuel, and then professional services. Some of the things that come out here is our reporting system, Image Trend, which we just put in the works, I think it was about a year and a half ago. It's how we report to the state. It's also how we do our pers, patient care reports when we're out in the field and we're treating a patient. It's all the recording of that, and, and that information also goes up to the state. But just when we have a fire, that information is for us to run data, but also going to the state also. So, that's a big chunk of that. And then also, our department physicals, which each and every single one of the personnel in our departments offered a physical, which is gonna be next month. It's, you know, above and beyond what you'd see in the doctor's office, looking for those things, you know, heart attacks, precursors, things that truly take out firefighters and, and cancers. And so, we're gonna be having that next, at the beginning of next month. And then the training and education, it's going to classes here in the valley, such as the Fresno Symposium, which, you know, members of the fire department come from up and down the state. We're lucky enough to have it in Fresno, so it is a little bit of a cost savings to be able to send them to Fresno. But it's overall training from ventilation training, extrication training, hazmat training, and then those upper classes with leadership and teaching our new and up-and-coming to become officers within there. But then we also have the RTF training, which is training that we do with Fresno Fire Department and Clovis Fire Department, and that's for technical rescue up and down the state if we're to have an earthquake, or even just the, the fires that happened this last December down in the Palisades, is that when a house burns down, you still need to have people that go through there and either looking for deceased bodies, or making sure that the buildings are safe for other people to go into and check. And so, that's where those teams come in. Then, also, we just put on a class here, probably about a month ago, which is a trench rescue class, where we had members of Fresno Fire, Clovis Fire, surrounding agencies came, and we provided it here in Kingsburg. And so, it's a good way that we could highlight our facilities and put on good training, and our members get that training also, and then to make them instructors. So, for 2425, capital outlay, you see on there our new fire engine. We've been, basically, it's been in production for about two to three years. A fire engine usually lasts about 10 to 15 years in frontline, and then it usually goes into reserve status for about five years. And, wish I could say the fire engines are lasting longer now, but they're not. With all the computer components that are on, they're actually at lasting less time. And so, and they're getting really expensive. So, I think our current one is that you allocated about $940,000 for the engine and equipment. But just in that time period, fire engines now are usually about 1.1, 1.2 million dollars for a fire engine. And if you were to get a truck, the one that you have, or ladder truck that you see there, you're looking at about 1.6 to 1.8 million. So, truly, putting that money away that we're putting away and trying to plan for the future is where it's at. And, you know, and obviously, the, the hard work that you're doing with federal and state legislators of looking for that one-time money from them also to, to make a lot of these purchases. So, you also see on there $15,000 for PPE testing, as required by Cal OSHA. It was, used to be a NFPA recommendation to do this, but Cal OSHA took over, and now they're making it to where we have to do a certain amount of washings of our equipment. We have to do a certain amount of inspections of our equipment. Our PPE, which is our fire, basically, jacket and pants that we wear inside of a fire is only good for 10 years. Doesn't matter if you only wore it once, or you wore it 100 times. At 10 years, it, it is expired. And so, with that testing now, it's, you know, we're not, sometimes we're not getting the full 10 years out of that PPE any longer. It's basically the cost to repair it, or the, the damage that they see in it. We're having to retire it even sooner. And so, putting away, and, and each member in our fire department has two sets of gear, because when one's washing, when you come back from a fire, you need another pair to wear, or if you're shipping it off to get it repaired. And sometimes, to get it repaired, it takes a month at a time to get it back. And so, these things aren't cheap, usually to outfit a new firefighter, just with one set of gears, about $4,500 to $5,000. So, yeah, it's, it's getting more and more expensive. The $20,000 that you see in emergency operations was for the standard of coverage that Chief Bonansky presented to you not too long ago, and that was for the work of that, and also the data collection of that with Paul Rotenberg from Fire Stats. And so, that is, I think we've completed that one. And then the $5,000 that you see in replacement for fire hose, so we're getting, you'll see some firefighters out now, and probably some cul-de-sacs somewhere over in the industrial area. And every year, we test every bit of the hose that's on all of our fire engine, and also the rack, just to make sure that it'll still function when we're needing it on a fire. And so, that hose, just the same, is it's expensive, and not necessarily that it has a shelf life, but it does wear out, and we have to replace it from either the outside, or the inner liner will separate. And so, just to replace that hose and have some on the rack, and, you know, if it was damaged on the call. For Measure E 2526, our allocation for position is gonna be the same. We have no changes in it. We're not gonna change any of the things that we have right now in the fire department. So, it's still gonna be three fire captains, one apparatus engineer, one part-time administrative assistant, and then the account clerk and the accountant, and we have those portions of those. And then lastly, for the capital, capital outlay, we are gonna continue to, to save the $100,000 a year for the, for the next fire engine. And so, which is truly needed, that we don't, you know, it's gonna be a little bit before we need to buy another fire engine, but I couldn't tell you what the price is gonna be the day that we purchase it. And so, we're just not gonna have an idea for a little while. I think things are evening out. I'm just talking to vendors that are selling fire equipment, and they're already seeing the, you know, they're not selling as many items. We're not gonna see as many fire engines bought. A lot of that ARPA money, that one-time money, most cities went out there and, you know, some went out and put it into salaries, and some of it went out and bought one-time things. And so, when you have a, you know, when, when you're sitting there, and the, there was a lot of fire engines that were on order at one time, and they're not seeing that any longer. And so, maybe those costs come down, or maybe the time comes down, but I just don't see that it's gonna come down that much. And that's all I have in my presentation, if you have any questions for me.
Questions for Chief, or comments for Chief?
I have a question. I'd like to ask you the same question that I asked Chief Dadian, but since you're new here, that wouldn't be fair. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tweak it a little bit. So, now that you've been here for several months, and you're familiar with the department, how do you compare the department versus other departments that you know of, or that you may have been at, as far as, on a scale of 1 to 10?
Well, being a smaller department, with a smaller city, I would say that we're doing really well. And I would say that some of that has to do with the ambulance revenue, the healthcare district, the money that's coming in, definitely the Misery money that's here, and also the general fund. If you compare us to, I don't really wanna say city names, but, but if you, if you look at it, that we have full-time personnel, we have 18 full-time personnel with a city of our size, and I would say that we're doing really well. And that when I could put six people, if we're not having a medical aid at the same time, I could put six people on a fire, that's great for the size city that we have right now. And so, I'm hoping, you know, when we do have a fire, that the ambulances aren't at Cuyahoga Delta or RMC, but I would say that we're doing really well in that area. And, and having the more firefighters that we have here, and the luxury that we have here, I feel very confident that we'd make better stops on fires and have our fire loss down, and it's safer for the community, having the people that we have here. And, and we're lucky because of the, the Misery and having the ambulance personnel here that are cross-trained to be not only fire EMTs and paramedics, but they're also firefighters. And we just had a fire behind Save Mart in the compactor the other day, and I got there, it was like 5 o'clock in the morning, and I show up and I see seven people, because we actually have an intern also from Fresno City College, and they're a firefighter. And they're free to the, you know, to the city, for the most part, and, and we're gonna get two more here relative, or actually, we're gonna get three more here relatively soon. And just to be able to, you know, and it helps me sleep at night knowing that we have the extra people here, just, you know, there's a lot of fire departments that are out there, that there's only one person on that fire engine, and Tulare County is still that one, but they are making advancements in that, and they're putting two people on a fire engine. But I, nobody can enter into a house and put out a fire unless you hear somebody actively screaming inside, unless there's two people going in and two people standing outdoor waiting to go in. So, you have to have at least four people on scene before you could do any of that. And so, knowing that we have six, I could put two people inside, I could put two people outside, standing by, and I could have two people shutting off electricity, shutting off the gas, fighting fire from the other side. There's a lot of things that we are going up on the roof and start ventilating. There's a lot of things that we could put in place in the first five minutes, and we all know that fire starts doubling as time ticks. And so, the, having those firefighters there in the beginning is, is crucial before we're waiting on Engine 83 to come in, or Engine 2 from Tulare County Fire Department come in, or the engine from Burris Park to come in from Kings County, or an engine coming from Parlier, having those firefighters here. And it's Misery, and it's the general fund, and it's, and it's, and it's also the ambulance that helps us to, to make all that come together. So, and, just so you know, I do know the equipment that you had before Misery, and we still have two of them that are sitting over there at Station 2, and that's, you know, it's, it's the hand-me-downs from Fresno Fire, and we are thankful for that. Big cities that are like that, and just as we did, and, and thank, thank you to the council, is that we're doing the same thing when we're giving Huntington Lake a Tahoe, or we're giving Hume Lake an ambulance. We're doing the same thing as what Fresno did for us. And that's, they're hand-me-downs. They still have some years left on them. They are costing us more in maintenance. But, as you can see, Engine 141 that's over there, it's still a good apparatus. It's still gonna last us a while. We're gonna put that in reserve status. We're gonna put it at Station 2 and maybe do some other things with it that we'll talk about later. And, but we have that brand-new engine that's on its way, that will be here hopefully within the month, and, and it will outfit that thing. And we have good equipment, and, and all of our ambulances, they're good pieces of equipment, and, and they do exactly what we need them to do, and they're, you know, it, it's great to have a big box on an ambulance, and, and where two people can work in the back of it if you had a crucial patient, instead of being cramped down in the back. And so, we have good equipment, and we got good people. And so, all in all, it, it would be a detriment to see Misery go away, and, and not having that firefighting force that, that we do right now.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I appreciate the fact that you guys have been, both departments have been, in my opinion, excellent stewards of the taxpaying dollars. You know, the, I think you guys are using them in, in great ways to make both departments excellent in their, in their own right. And so, like police, I saw, you know, several of your staff as well, the fire staff was out there at the dollar trot, and they were helping, they were there if anything was to, you know, go wrong at the finish line. And they were engaged and respectful, and I appreciate that about your department as well. So, thank you, and please continue to do what you're doing. Appreciate it.
And you don't see that a lot of places, and they definitely have the, you know, the, the heart of Kingsburg, and, and they're out there, and they know that, you know, I don't even need to tell them, and they're already lining up, hey, we already know we gotta be here for the Swedish Festival, every single one of us, you know, it's, it's an automatic. It's not like I have to go out there and put an email and, you know, beat down doors and send them three more text messages, you better be here. They all know.
Yeah, I have a comment. Yeah, with Measure E, Chief Dadian and Chief Roberts, you know, you're new here, but I, I hope the public realizes how important this 1% safety tax is. You know, there's, there's no price on safety, and you guys have been good stewards of the money, you know. And I know there could potentially be another Measure C. There could be two in November. So, I just want our citizens, you know, whoever's listening tonight, or put it out there that, we all need to put it out there, that Measure E's gonna be very important for the public safety of Kingsburg and, you know, for the, and the valley, because you guys go on calls on the freeways, you know, different counties, and same with our police, and they do a great job with, if they have to go to Tulare County and help out, or the officers that are involved with magic and stuff, so.
Yeah.
Measure E's very important. But thank you guys for, keep it, keep it the good work, please. Definitely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
That's informational only. There's no action needed on that. So, we'll move to Item 16, which is the 2025, 2026 draft of the capital improvement plan for fiscal year 26. Streets update, staff report by City Manager Alex Henderson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As we continue our build-out of the budget for the future year, I do have a draft capital improvement project plan for your review this evening. This was created in partnership with, with each of our department heads. And so, we have a, have you feel go down to the actual spreadsheet, if you can? Yeah, yeah, the draft plan. Yep. So, you can see here, it's organized by department on the left, and then we also call out which strategic goal is met, and the type of request that it is, the, the item description and its purpose, and then our estimated cost, as well as the funding source. So, there's a number of funding sources that we utilize for all of these projects. And I'll just, I'll just take a couple minutes to, to highlight a few, but I'm certainly happy to answer any other details. And then I'll also talk a little bit about our streets projects that we have proposed, both for this coming summer as well as next summer as well. So, we are in the process of our, our space needs assessment, which was approved by council, so a portion of that is already underway, but we'll continue into the next fiscal year, so we're including that. We are including some potential funds for the forgivable loan program, which we have a pending application with the Delhi Kosa Project, which is underway. We'll finish our, our final, our, our year three of our general plan update in the next fiscal year as part of that. We received a grant, a carbon reduction grant through Fresno COG for EV charging stations in the downtown, so this upcoming year will include the design costs for that, and those, that will include council input as well as public input on potential locations for that. We have a couple of air quality grants that we received, and so they'll include alley repairs on 21st, or 20th and 21st avenues, south of Sierra Street, as well as the Mailer and Workington Alley improvements. I'll talk about the streets in a little bit. Chief Roberts mentioned the fire engine deposit, as well as our new fire engine delivery. We thought that we would receive the new fire engine delivery this year, but it's looking more and more like it will probably kick into the next year. We do have all the funds saved for that. We have a, a new PD vehicle purchase on there, as well as the installation of 10 license plate reader cameras throughout the community. And then we also have our Measure E renewal effort, which we just talked about previously, so we are budgeting funds for that for the coming year, pending a June 2026 election cycle. Before I move on to the road projects, are there any questions on those projects that I mentioned, or any that I didn't mention?
Any questions?
I have a question on the alley improvements. When is that gonna be done, Alex?
The summer.
The summertime, okay.
Yes, this, so probably, yeah, probably July, August timeframe.
Okay, thank you.
As it relates to the roads, so the way that we handle...
Real quick, Alex, no, just on the, I know that, out of all these things, it's the smallest item, but it's the, it's the TNR costs. Are we going through that every year and turning people away from that program? Do we need to increase the allocations for that, is my question?
I mean, we could, it, it probably depends. I mean, we could probably, really, it probably wouldn't matter what the number is. We could probably go through it, so.
So, we, we do burn through that pretty quickly. How, how early in the year do we generally get through that money?
Well, Adam has a little bit more of a... Well, Adam has a little bit more of a dedicated group of volunteers now. And there's usually a couple of times a year, I think, that they try and focus on, which is around when they're breeding. But I think we had a smaller amount this year and I think we probably burned through it probably early part of January this year, so halfway through the year. So we have increased that amount this year, but certainly happy to entertain.
That answers right. Thank you.
Yeah. As it relates to the streets projects, so we really identify, we really kind of work a year in advance. And the reason for that is, is because of just how, because of the timing. Obviously, our budget falls on July one and our ability to pay for things, you know, usually happens in the new year, but, or in the new fiscal year, but a lot of the work before that has to happen in the previous fiscal year. So we identify projects a year in advance. So the projects that are slated for summer of twenty-two-five, which will take place, you approved the contract this evening as part of your consent calendar agenda. So those streets up there have already been bid. Don Berry was the lowest bidder for the streets projects portion. So those will take place in July and August this year. And then we have identified the projects for fiscal year, which will, it'll be next summer, so summer of twenty-two-six, but technically in fiscal year twenty-seven. And you'll see there some estimates that we have. So we'll spend, Dave's office and Daniel's, along with Daniel, will spend, you know, a portion of next year doing the design work, surveying work in preparation for that, putting it out to bid, you know, roughly in May of twenty-two-six. And then work will happen in summer of twenty-two-seven. And we are timing up some of our, we do know that there's going to be, so there is some federal projects as part of next year on Eighteenth Avenue. I think the following summer, the summer of twenty-two-seven, is the roundabout project. So we are trying to time when we will be doing those street projects. So there's not a ton of disruption, but there's also portions of local match that we have to account for for some of those projects. So just being cognizant of the revenues that we have specifically for roadway. So those are gas tax, local transportation funding of what's also known as LTF eight that we receive through COG, and then Measure C. And so obviously Measure C is a potential for non-renewal. And we receive about half a million dollars through Measure C each year annually. We use that on a variety of things, but certainly helps cover some of our costs for road projects as well. Abigail, there's a map, too, if you could go down to that and you can kind of, yep. So all the items in pink are slated for this summer and the ones in blue are the proposed ones that would be completed next summer. So that concludes my report. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions or comments from council? Any public comment on this? Can we close public comment? If there's nothing else from council? Okay, that's informational only. So we will move on to future agenda items, which is none. So we will slide right back to you for the city manager's report.
Just a reminder that the next council meeting is on July third, or excuse me, June third. It's a Tuesday. So not two weeks from tonight, but thirteen days from tonight. And we will, that will include the initial review of the proposed twenty-two-six budget. There's no action that evening, but it will be the first presentation and then the public hearing will come at the second meeting in June. So if there are any comments, both from the public or from council about the budget until, you know, before then even, please feel free to reach out to staff and I'll be happy to speak with you.
Councilmember reports and committee reports, starting with councilmember Silva.
Thank you, Mayor Purcell. So the South Kings GSA did meet last week and we did approve the budget. The San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control have not met, nor has the Economic Development Committee. I had councilmember North attend the Kingsburg Healthcare District meeting on my behalf because I had a conflict with the South Kings GSA. So councilmember North reported back that there was fifteen different presentations for grants and Adam from the city presented on behalf of the Senior Center Lunch Program. So we hope that that one gets approved. And then also I filled in for councilmember Palomar at the Public Safety Meeting, which the Kingsburg Police Department gave a presentation about drones and funding for a drone program, which the Public Safety Committee did allocate five thousand dollars out of this year's funds for a new drone and the drone program. So thank you, councilmember Palomar, for allowing me to do that and councilmember North for allowing me, or for sitting in on the Kingsburg Healthcare District. In addition, councilmember North and I were both at the chamber meeting. And so the chamber meeting discussion was wrapped around July third fireworks. In addition, they were very laser-focused on the Swedish, upcoming Swedish Festival. So I did want to thank the chairwoman, Sharon Pearson, for the Swedish Festival, chairing the Swedish Festival Committee and Stacy, councilmember Stacy Smith. You guys did an excellent job and really appreciate, back-to-back, it was hard, I think it, very difficult for Chamber, you know, going back-to-back with Car Show and then right into Swedish Festival. But they did it seamlessly and both chair, both chairs and committees did an excellent job with both of them. So thank you to both of, to you and all of Chamber. I really appreciated that. And then, let's see here, there was one other item. Nope, I guess that's it. I think I covered it all. Oh, I did want to thank Matthew Tuttle, Mayor Matthew Tuttle, from the city of Reedley. He participated in the parade as well as State Assemblywoman Alexandra Macedo. So she rode on the trolley with us and it's great to hear her insights at what's going on at the state Capitol and how they're trying to, you know, tackle the difficult issues of the state. And so I just wanted to thank them for attending as well as, I'm going to duplicate it, but as well as police and fire. They were out in full force at Swedish Festival and I really did appreciate that. So that concludes my report.
Councilmember Smith?
The Finance Committee hasn't met. We're going to be meeting on, our next scheduled meeting is June twenty-third. Community Services Commission, our next scheduled meeting is June twenty. I know, we have one in May, don't we? June twenty-sixth, or June twenty-fifth, it says on here. I did want to make mention about the Swedish Festival. We did receive a lot of press. We actually had three interviews, news slots. And one of them that I was kind of excited about is PBS is doing a Valley, PBS Valley Spotlight on Kingsburg. And I participated, Alex participated as well as two of the Swedish Festival queens. So that should be coming out soon. I'll forward that to you, but I think that'll be a neat segment. And it wasn't focused on the Swedish Festival. It was focused on the Swedish, Kingsburg, the Swedish Village. It'll be neat.
Thank you. Mayor Proton?
Planning Commission, we have a meeting, a joint meeting tomorrow night with city council. SKF, we met last Tuesday and we had a public hearing. Had a public hearing on the CIP, CIP, and we closed public hearing. There's no public comment on that. So we ended up adopting the program for the fiscal year of twenty-two-five, twenty-six for CIP. And then we also had a public hearing for the budget. And we also adopted the budget for fiscal year twenty-two-five, twenty-six at SKF last Tuesday. And then, oh, Public Safety, thank you, Dave, for filling in for me because I was at SKF. The Swedish Festival was a great success. So the parade was fun. Thank you to Stacy and Sharon for all your hard work. I want to thank Buddy Mendez. He spoke. He's our county supervisor for Fresno County for our district. Then Nathan Magzik showed up and he spoke, said a few words. He, he's going to run for state senate, so he didn't talk about state senate. He just was thanking Kingsburg for putting on, you know, for our great town and our Swedish Festival. But, you know, I think we, I wanted to support him. He's one of our county supervisors. So I think he has a chance to win that senate seat maybe one day. And then Ali, Ali showed up and was in the parade with us. So everything was great. The great weather, pancakes were delicious. So kudos to Alliance Club. And that's all I have.
Awesome, thank you. For me, I want to thank Vince for covering for me this weekend for the Swedish Festival as I was in the state. I heard it was a great success. COG and Transit, we meet next week. I don't have anything, anything else to report. Is there anything else from staff, public, or council? Okay, seeing none, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you.
Not bad. Oh, it's at eight. Oh, cool.